We're gonna call the meeting to order. We're gonna stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, the foundation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna move on to the Golden Apple Awards, Dr. Lanz.
Thank you, Madam President. At this point, I'd like to call up Laura Iquinto. Laura, can you please come forward? We found that standing right in the middle makes the people the most uncomfortable, so you're welcome. Laura was nominated by three of her colleagues at Oakley Park because Laura is reliable, she steps in whenever needed, and shows how important a positive work ethic is to students and staff. Although Laura's been assigned to one child throughout her time at Oakley Park as a paraprofessional, she always lends a helping hand and a loving heart to all students, whether it is to help out with a team meeting or just give a big hug at the front door. As a parent educator with extreme life-threatening allergies, excuse me, as a parent educator to a child who has extreme life-threatening allergies, Laura must consistently coordinate different plans, schedules, and environments to allow this child to fully participate in all of the daily activities that an elementary school student has. She searches for alternatives and for supplies and materials in order for this student to feel included and connected with his peers. Every day, Laura will check in with students and staff, making connections and building relationships. She maintains a lighthearted perspective and truly cares about each and every student with her gracious heart. Laura, on behalf of Wald Lake Schools and of course, Oakley Park Elementary, thank you for all that you do for students in your building, everything that you do every day to make our students feel safe, comfortable, and happy, and more importantly, loved. It is our honor to recognize you this evening. If you'd like to say something, feel free.
Hi, everybody. Somebody prepared me for this a little bit, so thanks, Blake. I really just wanted to say a couple of things. I'm honored to receive the Golden Apple Award. Over the years, I've had the pleasure of working with amazing teachers, paraprofessionals, and administrators. I've always felt supported and valued. I'd like to thank LeAnn, Leslie, and Wendy for this nomination, and also thanks to Blake for a great 5th grade year. He wanted me to say that. Thanks to my family for all their support. My husband, Pat, and my daughter, Ellie, are here tonight. And thanks to the Oakley Park staff. They're like my family. And I appreciate that you came here tonight to support me. I have one more wake-up tomorrow, and then I'm officially retired. So, but I will treasure the friendships that I made along the way. So, thank you very much.
Our next recipient is Leah Nelson, food service staff member at Wixom Elementary. Leah, can you come forward? Yeah, a little bit. Leah was nominated by Casey Marshall, a teacher at Wixom, because Leah radiates joy and makes children feel that they have one more trusted adult in their lives. Leah is incredible representation of happiness. "I want my own children to be welcomed by her each day," said Casey. "She creates natural connections with every child, every day." Leah is motivated by the joy that she brings to students' lives, and she consistently demonstrates true joy in her job. She is an excellent model of someone who is passionate about the work that they do and inspires others to find that passion on the days that it might not come so easy. Leah has created an environment in the cafeteria that makes everyone feel at home. She brings the students in on the lunch-serving process by having specific jobs to help each of them contribute to their school community. She makes working fun. Leah, thank you so much for all you do for the students at Wixom. It is our honor to recognize you this evening. It's your choice. It's 100% your choice. We'd love it if you'd like to.
Okay, she said I have a speech. I'm gonna speak anyway, because I'd like to talk. I just wanna say thank you. Working at Wixom is amazing. My kids go there, so I started as a parent and then as employees, so I love it, truly. I work with amazing people, so I love my job. But, thank you. So, I'll be there forever. Good luck to your retirement. I'll be there probably for like ever. My baby's kindergarten, so I'm not going anywhere.
All right.
Thank you.
The Foundation for Excellence Awards, Dr. Lanz.
Thank you. Happy to turn it over to Ms. Jackie Gerwin.
Thank you very much for the time. So, for those of you who are not familiar with the foundation, I'd just like to make sure everybody knows what we do. Really, our whole role is to raise money and give it back to teachers for things they need for their classroom. Additional things that the district can't provide, that's kind of our role, is to try to help them out. But we can't do this by ourselves, and so we always have some amazing people in the background who have helped us out in a number of ways, and I have three of them I would like to honor tonight. In all fairness, the first one's kind of a group award, so I would like to invite anybody who is part of our PTSA Council to come on up. I won't make you stand in the middle unless you wanna stand in the middle. So, I tried to come up with some appropriate words to describe the group of people that make up our PTSA Council. Things like amazing, dedicated, and passionate all came to mind. But truly, I don't think there's one word that can encompass all of the things that PTSA means to our district and the FFE. This group of people spends hours upon hours giving their time and energy to make teachers feel appreciated and to make kids smile. They help raise money for walking tracks, for climbing walls. They help host events that every student can take part in. They become leaders in our district, and you can even find former PTA board members sitting at the table in the front of this room. So, raise your hand if you were part of PTA. All right. See? I have been honored to be part of this group, and I call these people my friends. As the director of the FFE, I have asked them to help share what we do with their families, and they do. We've asked if they might be willing to help sell Tuition Expedition raffle tickets, and they are. We ask if they'll donate raffle baskets for golf scramble, and they do that, too. These people who have already dedicated themselves to serving their school have somehow also made time to help the FFE, and we can't thank them enough. The Wald Lake PTSA Council is the epitome of outstanding and very deserving of our outstanding generosity, our outstanding support and generosity award. Congratulations. See? And she's gotta head off to a PTA job. That's kinda how this works. So, now I would like to invite Paul and Lori McVeigh to come on up. So, Paul and Lori McVeigh have been part of this community for years, and when I say "part of this community," I don't mean they just lived here. I mean that they have made a difference here. While I've only had a couple of direct interactions with Paul and Lori, whenever their names come up in conversations, someone always has a story about how wonderful they are. They dedicated themselves to the Lakes Area Rotary, where they supported many nonprofits and organizations in the area, including the Foundation for Excellence. They're founding members of the Hospitality House Food Pantry and continue to support them to this day. Sometimes, when I get the chance to talk with people, you learn things about them when there isn't any fanfare or acknowledgement associated with it. I called Paul a few months back to thank them for a donation they made to the FFE. While he indicated that they're happy to support any of our programs, if we could steer that money towards something to do with music, that would be their preference. He mentioned that years ago, they purchased an expensive instrument for one of the school band classes, simply because they knew they needed it. They've given donations to the Wald Lake Schools Therapy Dog Program, and many times, they've provided funds to the FFE. And just as a note to everyone in the audience, if you want lessons on how to make more of an impact with your donations, Paul and Lori are the ones to ask. They always remember to ask their former employer for matching gift donations, which helps every cent they donate go farther. If you're looking for someone to be a role model in helping to improve your community, you need to look no further than Paul and Lori. We are so thankful for you being part of this great community. Please accept this award for outstanding support and generosity for all you have done for the FFE and Wald Lake Schools.
If I could say just one very short word. I've seldom been at a loss for words, was on the debate team and that sort of thing. One of the things that has motivated me in music is the Wald Lake Schools music program, which has been exceptional for at least 60 years that I know about, 70 years, 80 years. It was back before World War II. Wald Lake had, and you talk into people at the Historical Society, Wald Lake had a band that was a key part of the community, going back to the 1930s, as I understand it. And that support for music and the arts in the schools means a lot to a lot of people. I'm one of them. I learned the tonette in 4th grade, played in the band all the way through school, as did my older brother. Now, my grandchildren are Wald Lake Northern, involved in the arts. So, that's... Thank you to the Board of Education and to the history of the Wald Lake School District for supporting those programs. That's what I really wanted to touch on.
Don, did you wanna come up, too? All right. So, last but not least, I'm gonna invite Kevin Terry to come up and receive the Michael Bernhardt Legacy Award. So, while I never actually met Michael Bernhardt, I have heard many stories about him and was told how passionate he was about the foundation, but that he never really worked to get any sort of notoriety from it. He was a behind-the-scenes guy, just trying to make a difference. Now, I can't say Kevin is really a behind-the-scenes kinda guy, because he definitely stands out in a crowd. But he certainly didn't do any of this foundation work for the accolades. He just wanted to make a difference. Every conversation I've had with Kevin keeps me laughing. He's super easygoing, easy to be around, and always made himself available to talk and answer my questions. Sometimes Kevin speaks financulease, and honestly, I don't understand what he's saying, but he's patient, and he'll explain it as many times as I need. Kevin's raised three daughters in the area and spent 10 years on the Foundation for Excellence Board, supporting our teachers and students. While he's stepped back from the FFE, he's not stepping back from our community. He's continuing to make a difference through a new role on Hospitality House's board, and has started up his own accounting firm, the Terry Accounting Group, and yes, that is a shameless plug. So, I'm so glad that the FFE has given me a chance to meet Kevin, because, like the rest of my board would agree, my life is better for knowing you. Thank you for all of your hard work for the FFE and for the community in general. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Annual Sports Recognition, Dr. Lanz.
Thank you very much. It's my honor to turn it over to Mr. Brian Swinehart, District Wide Athletic Director.
Thank you very much. First, Laura Iquinto. She was my neighbor for a number of years, second mom to my kids. Congratulations to you. Thanks for all you did, and seeing you with your emotion and your heart, that's what you give every day. We've been very fortunate to have you working in our district and also to have you as a friend, so thank you. And thanks to the Iquintos for sharing her. Really appreciate that. So, thank you to the board. We appreciate this time to be able to come and recognize our athletes here. So, it's my 40-year class reunion coming up this summer, and I know many of you are probably thinking, "You're not that old." I don't look that old. Yeah, I know, I look a lot older than that. But the shock of that, as kind of the first shock when that started, and knowing that I'm really getting that old and what's happening in the years, once that kinda wore off, I started to remember. I look back. I remember my history teacher, Howie North, used to always say, his thing was "bugaboo, bugaboo," and I can still picture him with his glasses saying that. My 6th grade teacher, Mrs. Kortikowski, teaching us prepositions, that I can still remember to this day, about, above, across, after, against, among, around, at, before, behind, beside, between, beyond, by, down, and during. I won't go through the whole thing, but I still use that today, because her pet peeve was, "Don't end a sentence in a preposition." So, I was always in that mode, and I run through that thing in my head, so I still remember that. Mr. Oliver, my math teacher, one of the kindest men, that was the teachers that we ever were around. I remember dodgeball back in the old days, when you'd have like a volleyball that was kind of a little bit deflated and throwing and getting hit, and I think I still have bruises from that. Talk about the arts, I was in band. I enjoyed that. I was in the school plays. I did all those things. But a part of my life growing up, and a big part, was athletics. And so, when you look at athletics and those memories that you have, I can literally remember back to T-ball, and I can remember striking out in T-ball. And I don't know who can do that, but I did it. I struck out in T-ball, and I can remember that moment. I can remember a block in the back that I had in football that cost our team a touchdown in middle school. Those things that come in there, 6:00 AM basketball practices, a league championship that we won, I can still go back and see my picture in the showcase. I remember losing an unhealthy amount of weight to wrestle at 98 pounds my freshman year, and we're a lot, and that's two of me today, over two of me. So, but we've, obviously, we're doing a lot better with that. But most importantly, when I look back on that and I truly think about this, and it's not a cliche, there are so many life lessons that I learned in my athletic career. I learned to compete, to compete, to every single day, to come and get after it. Those are things that make us, and our kids are learning, to be achievement-oriented. We're winning and losing every single day, and to be able to compete and go after it. Resiliency, failing more times than we succeeded, but getting up time and time again, and that life lesson, because we know life kicks us in the teeth too many times, and can you bounce back and be ready? Can you communicate and deal with communication? We've already had us athletes, our toughest boss probably, that we've ever had in our coach. The demands that they place on us, the challenges that they have, the pushing of those things. We're used to the harsh criticism. We're used to those things, and we're used to tough feedback that can be lost in today's world. And Mr. Froning, in honor of you, "The team, the team, the team." It hurts me to say that as a Spartan, but the infamous Bo Schembacher saying that he had, and you truly learn to be a part of something bigger than yourself. And can you compete and be there and sacrifice and give something more than yourself that you have? But also, part of that is learning to be a good follower. Sometimes, everyone talks about being a good leader, but you also learn to be a good follower. And then time management that we have, I want to tell you about the late nights, the dinners at 8:00 AM, at 10:00 AM, early morning practices, swim two times a day, studying, trying to get those things in. All those things come into play in athletics. All those things that you're looking at can help, are life lessons that our athletes learn. They learn to compete. They learn resiliency, communicate, being a part of something bigger than themselves, and time management. Those are the successful things that programs that we have, that our student-athletes learn every single day. We're not perfect, but we have outstanding coaches in Wald Lake. We have outstanding culture in Wald Lake. We have coaches that give up time from their own families to be a part, to coach our students, and we're very thankful for that. The athletes that we're gonna see tonight, and we'll start off, if you guys wanna start coming up to recognize, are the ones that have, are gonna be successful later in life. They're the ones that have shown those traits, that have had the resiliency, that have worked hard and all those things. So, tonight, we're gonna honor not only some of the best athletes in Wald Lake, but some of the best athletes in the state of Michigan that we're gonna see here today. So, we're gonna start with Sarah and Western. So, Sarah,
Good evening, everyone. My name's Sarah Fesmeyer. I am one of the assistant principals at Wald Lake Western High School. I'm also the building athletic director over there as well. This is my sixth year in Wald Lake in both of those positions, and it's an honor tonight to give you a laundry list of students who have academic and athletic accomplishments. It gives me a great opportunity to celebrate kids who potentially don't always get celebrated individually or as a team consistently. So, this is a great opportunity for us to recognize them, and I'm happy to do so. The following Western athletes received Academic All-State this year. Our football team was first-team Academic All-State, our boys soccer team, and our softball team. The following Western athletes received Academic All-State, and these are all individual. Ethan Baskin, football. Ryan Boyce, football. Blake Jack, football. Jackson Lippert, football. Austin Ryback, football. Raya Dewey, girls volleyball. Megan Hill, girls volleyball. Bree Woodman, girls volleyball. Blair Whaling, girls volleyball. Jaclyn Lopez, girls volleyball. Isabel Kavanaugh, girls golf. Olivia Butler, girls golf. Gracie Suave, girls golf. Kara Faust, girls golf. Avery Stallman, girls golf. Abigail Schmitz, girls golf. Luke Davies, boys soccer. Delaney Thibodeau, girls water polo. Blake Pigott, girls water polo. Courtney Behringer, softball. Carly Sanner, softball. Roman Attacari, boys soccer. Nathan Doick, boys soccer. Jack Houghton, boys soccer. I'm not done. Danielle Raskin, boys soccer. David Zao, boys soccer and boys volleyball, which, by the way, boys volleyball is a new club sport for us this year at Western. Logan Hickey, boys golf. Luke Davies, boys golf. Nathan Voe, boys volleyball. Jacob Solomon, boys volleyball. Toby Lyle, boys volleyball. Austin Lent, boys volleyball. Lawrence Carana, boys volleyball. Lucas Price, baseball. And Zach Emmer, baseball. Those are all of our Academic All-State individuals. The following athletes received individual athletic accolades. Gavin Noonan, All-State football. Troy Temple, All-State football, state qualifier, and All-State 4x100 and 4x200 for track and field. Liam Vaughn, All-State football, All-State wrestling, he ended up taking 6th place, state qualifier for track and field. Emma Hoffmeyer, girls cross-country, and was also a state qualifier. Alicia Olteno, Olteanu, excuse me, girls cross-country, also a state qualifier. Isabel Kavanaugh, girls golf, All-State and state qualifier. Olivia Butler, girls golf, All-State Honorable Mention. Gracie Suave, girls golf, state qualifier and All-State. Kara Faust, girls golf, All-State Honorable Mention. Ellie Palulichi, girls swim, state qualifier as well. Luke Davies, boys soccer, All-State Honorable Mention. Gabrielle Sotier, boys soccer, All-State Honorable Mention. Sophia Polo, girls swim, state qualifier. Sean Smith, boys soccer, second-team All-State and All-Star Game invite. Arianna O'Connell, girls ice hockey, All-State Honorable Mention. Aneah Greco, girls ice hockey, All-State Honorable Mention. Jackson Lippert, track and field, state qualifier and All-State 4x100 and 4x200. Brennan Lynch, track and field, state qualifier and All-State 4x100 and 4x200. Rodney Enzie, track and field, state qualifier and All-State 4x100 and 4x200. Sean Gretzinger, boys swim, state qualifier. Joey Sines, boys ice hockey, All-State Honorable Mention. And last but certainly not least, Emily O'Connor, girls diving, state qualifier. Congratulations to all of our Warrior athletes.
I'd like to call up Mr. Chuck Froning from Wald Lake Northern.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you for the opportunity to address you all one more time. The 23-24 year was a success for Northern teams and athletes. The greatest success came through personal growth and maturing from some of the things that Mr. Swinehart already talked about, training rigorously, persevering and performing in school while mentally and physically whipped, being accountable to teammates and coaches, prioritizing time and energy between team, school, family, and friends, communicating with adults about successes, disappointments, and disagreements. We love to witness that type of success and growth. Yet, the year was also tangibly successful, both for teams and individuals. Academically, six Northern teams qualified for Academic All-State, and 24 additional individuals qualified for Academic All-State honors. In terms of competition, four teams qualified for MHSAA State Finals, and 38 additional individuals qualified for MHSAA State Final competitions. And, for the 14th straight year, Northern kept the All-Sports Schuman Cup at Northern High School, identifying Wald Lake Northern as the high school with the most varsity victories in a single school year. Following teams and individuals are responsible for this success. Six academic All-State teams, that was girls swim, girls volleyball, girls basketball, softball, boys basketball, and boys swim. Then, we had 24- Then, we had 24 Academic All-State individuals. Our water polo team had Nastia Karpov, Adisa Debra, Grace Molsky, Maggie Henry, and Hannah Hollaburger. Our softball team had Nicole Brant Bedio, Lauren Fox, and Addison Nugent. Our volleyball team had Caitlin Freitag, Ava Epley, Kayla Budziak, Hadley Krieger. Our girls basketball team had Alina McCullough and Sophia Jablonsky. Our baseball team had Andrew Atwell, Owen Weinberger, Jake Riley, Carson Beatty, Matthew David, and Alex Definis. Our ski team had Logan Alio, David Malzik, Mason Spencer, and Lila Sparks. Then, our MHSAA team qualifiers, we had four of our teams go on to participate in the MHSAA Finals. That was boys cross-country, girls water polo, boys bowling, and girls bowling. In a little bit of a different category, our varsity dance team finished fifth in the nation this year, and our JV dance team finished second place this year. We had 38 MHSAA individual state qualifiers. From our girls swim team, we had Molly Zuska, Hannah Hollaburger, Josie Benke, Brooke Marriott, Kate Carter, Aubrey Galloway, Maggie Henry, Katrina Impelizari, Nastia Karpov. For boys swim, we had Ian Kaiser, Aiden Keefaber, Matthew Morris, Christopher Cahill, and Kyle Hollaburger. Ski team was Katrina Impelizari and Rudy Uresti. Boys cross-country, Ty Parker. Girls cross-country, Ava Kirchewski. Boys track and field, Nathan Bruß, Finn Gammerath, Ty Parker, Evan Rice, and Matthew Gerwin. Girls track and field included Maddie Gordon, Ally Gallagher, Emily Alt, Ava Kirchewski, Kate Carter, Ella Thompson, Megan Waldring, Lucy McCarthy, and Ava Epley. Boys bowling, Alex Harwood and Cody Antobius. Girls ice hockey, Lauren Fox and Michaela Ratliff. Tennis, Hadley Krieger. And water polo, Hannah Hollaburger. These student athletes, many of them seniors, have established a high bar for Northern athletics, and we are honored to celebrate their athletic and academic accomplishments. Thank you, everybody, again tonight for this opportunity. Appreciate it.
And next, we have Jess Fisher from Central High School.
Hello, everyone. First, I want to say a huge thank to Chuck Froning. He's leaving us, he's retiring, but he's also been my mentor this year for athletics, and I, he's been a world of help. I couldn't appreciate him more. Thank you so much, and I'll get started on some more of the good stuff. So my name's Jessica Fisher. I'm at Walled Lake Central. I'm the assistant principal and athletic director, and I'm standing here today to emphasize the accomplishments of our teams and our athletics at Walled Lake Central. The time and the commitment that athletes put into their sports is just as important as the time and commitment that they do for their academics. So I get to highlight today students who were amazing athletes and also great with the, you know, on that school piece as well, because that's so important that they combine both of those pieces. Another thing that I do want to bring up, and something I'm so happy and proud about when I'm at Walled Lake schools, is not only do we have all of these amazing athletes, we also do a really, really good job of bringing in Unified Sports. My previous place, we did not have that, and that, oh my gosh, if you haven't been to a Unified game yet, you've got to get there. It's amazing. And for those of you who maybe don't quite know yet what that is, it's where we pair able-bodied students with students with disabilities, and they get to go out and have those same experiences, and it's just so uplifting, and the positive atmosphere that it brings to our whole school and their ability to really like, understand one another is just unbelievable. We went from students being isolated, sitting at a table on their own, to filtering into the whole cafeteria. So it's just something amazing. But back to it. Okay. The following teams, so All-State Academic Team was softball. Another team, we had a state qualifier team, our boys tennis team. The following WLC athletes received Academic All-State in football, Brody Hirschman, Nathan Cody, and Nick Luca. In softball, we had Regan Adams and Angelina Roku and Grace Matherson. In skiing, Ally Gavin. In water polo, Valerina Chichilla. In gymnastics, Shaylee McCain and Maryam Profetto. And in baseball, Brayden Seaver. The following athletes received individual athletic recognition. Valerina Chichilla, water polo state qualifier. Shaylee McCann, All-State Gymnastics and Beam. Marianna Profetto, state qualifier gymnastics on the floor. Diego Baker, state qualifier swim. Leanna, oh, let me try that again. Leanna Allen, state qualifier swim. Ashley Eastman, also state qualifier for swim. Bryson Anderson, state qualifier wrestling, also All-State Track and Field, and he took fifth place in shot put. Annika Yuberg, state qualifier in wrestling. Nathan Cody, All-State Track and Field, third-place discus and seventh-place shot put. Jordan Harris was the state champion power lifter. She also took a scholarship for that. She's All-State Track and Field and fourth-place shot put. Gerard Alexander, All-State Track and Field, third-place shot put. Ray Weatherington, All-State Track and Field, third-place pole vault. Tyler Morogi, All-State Track and Field, state runner-up shot put. Elijah Way, Kalen Glass, Bodie Hirschman, Nick Hopkins, All-State Track and Field, 10th-place 4x100 relay. And Benjamin Swanson, All-State Water Polo. And then Chuck, I've got to say, we're coming for you for that cup. We're going to get it eventually. All right? So, I've only, I've only had one year, give me more time. So, I would like to congratulate all of the outstanding athletes for Walled Lake, but I also want to say, go Vikings.
Thank you so much. And I do want to say, for any of you that have got the chance to know Chuck Froning, you know what a remarkable man he is. Chuck, I'm just going to tell you that I joke, and I've said this to him before, I want to be Chuck Froning. I want to be him because of the class, the character, his work ethic, how he carries himself, his commitment, what he's about. That's a standard for what I would love to be able to have for myself. I don't know if I can ever get there or not, but I'll tell you that that's, that's what I'd love to have, and one of the truly great men in education and as a person. So Chuck, you are going to be missed. You are going to be missed, and getting to know you and everything, you've made me a better person. So thank you, and best of luck, and I hope you stay in touch. Thank you again for the time, and one of the things I say, that before you leave the field, the scoreboard's turned off, the field, the lights may be off too, but the lessons we drew, and it's not a cliche, the lessons we learn in athletics last a lifetime, even for a guy that's going back to his 40-year reunion. So, thank you very much, and take care.
Just on a personal note, I couldn't tell you how many different members of the Board of Education that I have, you know, been led by over my 34 years. But I couldn't be more grateful for the leadership over those 34 years that our board has given to our district, along with the cabinet, our cabinet. There are just so many districts that have struggled in those areas, and because of that, the teachers, the families have felt a sense of maybe insecurity and uncertainty and unsafe conditions, and it's just incredible how supportive the Board of Education and our cabinet has been over my 34 years. And I just want to say thanks. It's been an incredible opportunity to wake up and know that I have a chance to make a difference every day.
Literacy Essentials Oakland Coaching Project, Dr. Lanz.
Thank you very much. It's my pleasure to turn it over to Mrs. Kohansky and her team.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Lanz. Thank you to the Board of Education for your time. We are very excited to talk about the Literacy Essentials, or LEO, project. It's a countywide coaching network, working with district literacy leadership teams to build capacity for early literacy success. That's that K2 sweet spot. Michelle Black, our ELA Social Studies Coordinator for the district, was not able to be here tonight. Her son is graduating from high school, so definitely want to recognize her and know that she's, she's off doing family things, as she should. But Debbie Faber and Christine Titus, two of our instructional specialists in the district, will help me present the work that we've accomplished so far. I say so far because we're not done, and this partnership with Oakland Schools that we've had going on. We'll also be reporting about our district's progress in literacy with regard specifically to their, their coaching and our data outcomes. So if you give me just a moment, I'll be happy to pull up our presentation, and we'll get ready to go. Luckily, Christine's got notes, because I didn't print mine off before I came. So, the Literacy Essentials Oakland Coaching System, we're just doing, we're taking a moment right now to do a quick reflection with you, talk with you about how this started, where we've been, and where we're headed. So a little bit of a timeline on the LEO project. Right prior to COVID, I want to say it was January of 2020. Many of us remember that, that nice innocent time in education. We were on the search at the time for some coaching that we could implement in our district with this brand-new project that Oakland Schools was launching. Funding it with 35A grant dollars, that's the early literacy grant that comes from the state. That money was coming to Oakland Schools. We also get 35A grant money, which we spend on early literacy work, but Oakland Schools was wanting to spread the wealth, so to speak, and to create something systemic across all 28 districts in the county. So LEO was conceived, and they started to build that system and roll that out to districts. So we were an inaugural district, we were right in on the get-go with this, and taking advantage of that. So we began in 2020, 2021, leading into that, in 2020, we were interviewing, but that literacy leadership team was also part of this. So part of Oakland Schools' work was, they not only said, hey, we're going to share this 35A grant money with you to help you offset the cost of an employee to do coaching around literacy, but we're also going to ask you to develop a leadership team at the district level that will help guide some of this work and help collaborate back and forth with Oakland Schools, and then to also create a roadmap. What is it that we hope to accomplish? What is our data showing? How can coaching be part of that bigger system? So, one of the other things that happened in the year following that, because we know we had a little COVID detour in there, but in 2021, 22, using some at-risk monies that were coming to us from 31A, the team and I designed the instructional specialist role. And I know at the time, I had informed the board about that, about that new position, about its purpose, and the way that that was going to function in each of our elementary schools. Because prior to that, some of our title buildings were able to utilize extra funds to be able to support work, but, you know, the, the buildings that didn't have those additional funds were, were sort of, you know, at a loss for how to help our most struggling learners. So, we developed the instructional specialist position. Both Debbie and Christine have been with us since the beginning, functioning in that role. And then in 22, 23, Dr. Kalani Dunsmore, who's been a consultant with Oakland Schools on this project, talked with stakeholders and kind of started to share those agreements. And then, our literacy leadership team in the last year has really worked with Oakland Schools, back and forth on, I believe we've had quarterly meetings with them, I'd have to check my calendar, but this cultivating a continuous improvement model. So there's a lot of data collection that we're doing back and forth and data sharing between ourselves and our system and Oakland Schools. So some smaller districts, they're utilizing this 35A grant money, they might employ one literacy coach, but here in Walled Lake, we're going to talk about how this one seed idea and project from Oakland Schools that we've designed a ripple effect, so that it doesn't just affect one coach, it doesn't just affect one school, but how does it affect all of our students K2? So that's what we're going to share with you today. So, I know there's a lot to read here, we'll make sure, I believe you have a copy of this in your packet, but this K5 literacy roadmap was what we developed as a literacy leadership team several years ago. And what it is, is the gray bubble, if you will, that's right there in the center, is really looking at what are research-based and research-supported practices that can take place in every classroom to help support literacy. And then, the other bubbles that go around that are those things that we can do to help impact that. So things like professional learning, shared expectations across our whole system. I know the Board of Ed knows me well and knows my passion around creating systems, and this is part of that work as well. The shared expectations for assessments and making sure that's universal and standardized too when it comes to literacy. The emphasis on tier-one curriculum. Tier-one, I know that's maybe not a term that, that everybody can recognize, but what that means is what teaching is taking place every day in the classroom for all those kids. So that's tier-one. So making sure that our curriculum is aligned and systemic. And then, lastly, supporting teachers with small group instruction. So I know I've shared with the board previously those Literacy Essentials that were developed in the state collaboratively with all the intermediate ISDs, but those essentials are really critical because those are research-based, and those are proven to have a direct impact on student success. So, small group instruction, if that sounds familiar, we're going to talk a little bit about MYKIP and our district improvement goals. So, that overall goal of our LEO partnership with Oakland Schools is to build the capacity of our educators. So this is meant, through coaching, to positively impact our teachers that are in front of classrooms of kids every day. That's really what this is about, and to create that system of how we do that. We're doing things like engaging in effective, intentional, systems-aligned supports to help all of our teachers, and really just continue to develop that culture around literacy. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Christine, and she's going to talk a little bit more in-depth, and I'll flip through your notes here to get you to the right spot. Oh, wait, I do have one more. Oh, my gosh. Sorry. This feels a little redundant, I know I've said a lot of this, but how do we impact that student achievement? Of course, it's through systems work, as I've described. We also focus on principal leadership, so how do we help our principals build capacity to help support this work? That's the work that I do with principals on a monthly basis in my ILT meetings. Our literacy coaching, as our wonderful two instructional specialists and the others do on a weekly basis. And then, how do we continue to focus on professional learning? So, growing beyond just our system, how do we continue to build that capacity? All of those things focused together are the purpose of LEO and its impact on student achievement. Now it's Christine's turn.
Good evening. As you know, in education and many industries, there's a multitude of alphabet soup, so I apologize in advance for that. We've been involved with the cultivating continuous improvement with our LLTR, Literacy Leadership Team, through Oakland Schools. That includes district administrators, principals, teachers, our LEO coaches, and then our teachers and the IS, and they meet, we meet quarterly at Oakland Schools, creating shared agreements, and we work towards instructional shifts and positive student growth through professional learning and instructional coaching, or as I lovingly like to say, co-teaching, because it really is a collaborative effort with the teachers that we're working with in the classrooms. with the teachers that we're working with in the classrooms. Our commitment with Oakland Schools and the State of Michigan Coaching Network grounds our purpose. Where we're implementing, and I want to really emphasize this research-based professional learning in a systematic way, which leads to an instructional shift. So you're seeing this across our whole elementary system. It's not just in one building. It's happening in all 12 of our buildings. So as you can see, it says "research suggests it takes 14 to 20 hours of professional learning to change instructional practice in a specific area." We've done some book study using no more random acts of literacy coaching, and it's really been impactful in our buildings since the impetus of this. I'm going to turn it over to Debbie next.
I am very aware that you're very familiar with the MYKIP goal within the district, but for the audience's sake, I'm going to just review it real quickly. MYKIP is Michigan's Integrated Continuous Improvement Process. It's the school improvement goal that public schools in the state of Michigan use data to find goals for continued school improvement. Our goals here in Wild Lake are to increase and enable students to increase proficiency in reading and comprehension and informational text through small group instruction. All the work that we've done with Oakland Schools through the LEO and CCI, Continuous Improvement, our district has embedded within our ICP goal. Collaboration during CCI has guided system practices and professional learning for staff. So that might make you think, what does an instructional coaching cycle look like? So we thought we'd kind of give you a little vision in your brain about what that might look like within the classrooms. That starts with a pre-conference. An instructional coach will work with a classroom teacher or a group of classroom teachers, having an initial coaching conversation to plan. It may be a data-driven coaching cycle, or it might be something that the teacher is interested in growing in their own practice. Within the classroom sessions, they can look a lot of different ways. It can be instructional coaches demonstrating or modeling instructional practices for the classroom teacher. It can be the instructional coaches observing the classroom teacher and giving them feedback, or vice versa. It can be side-by-side teaching, where we're working together. It can be a co-observation. We've had scenarios where we had several instructional specialists come in and model while a whole group, a whole grade level of teachers will observe and reflect on that. Within all the classroom sessions over the cycle, usually the cycles last between four and six weeks, depending. But within those classroom sessions, there's constant going back and re-debriefing and having conversations about what classroom teachers are noticing, what coaches are noticing, how things are going, what can we change and do better? Lots of reflection. And at the end of the coaching session, there's more debriefing and conversation, maybe goal-setting. Oh, let me switch my notes. The LEO-funded coaches, instructional specialists, have been logging all coaching interactions throughout the school year, resulting in year-end analytics that represent our coaching work. This has been a really great opportunity for us to really analyze and reflect and create goals for the future in our coaching. This graph represents those different classroom sessions from the previous slide and the kinds of coaching that we were interacted with during this school year. So you can see that we had a large number of co-planning type of interactions and modeling interactions. We've also had an emphasis on a literacy focus this year. This graph is a representation of the coaching interactions on Michigan's essential literacy practices. Those are the 10 essential literacy practices that you should see in every classroom every day. They're the big deal pieces that we want to see in every classroom. There are also coaching cycles that are on interactions with math and writing. We're going to spend more work with writing and math in the future. It's kind of a goal for us. But you can see that this year, most of our coaching experiences were in that small group instruction area, which aligns right with our MYKIP goal. I think that leads us to data.
All right. So we just completed our third diagnostic assessment. So we have end-of-the-year iReady data. I will be sharing with the board a broader overview of that and a bulletin item coming up in the next few weeks. Curriculum Associates, who is the vendor that provides our iReady diagnostic, as well as instruction modules, they weren't able to meet with me prior to this meeting. So they will be meeting with me and the team in the next few weeks, and then I'll be able to update the board with a broader overview. So this iReady data, though, is just looking at those K2 students in literacy and specifically how we believe that coaching has had some impact here on their literacy performance. So here's K2. This is just brand-new data. This is where kids are at right now. We just finished this at the end of May. So this, these three, almost they're like hundreds charts. For those of you that are familiar with the elementary classroom curriculum, these look like those nice little hundreds charts that go along with our math manipulatives. But you can see in kindergarten, 86% of students had an improved placement. So what that means is that if they were, and I know the board and hopefully our audience as well, is familiar with a number of iReady graphs that show the green, the yellow, the red, the light red, the dark red, the light green, the dark green. So we know that those represent placement distribution. 86% of our kindergartners moved from one placement into another. So they were actually making large growth. 75% of our first graders and then 74% of our second graders made that improved placement. And we'll dig into this on the next slide a little bit more clearly. So what you see on the left in the giant square is how our kindergartners tested in literacy in the fall, so diagnostic one. You can see that large swath of yellow of our kindergartners who were showing one grade level below or greater, some early on, some mid or above. And you might say, "Well, there's no red on that." Well, there's no measure for a kindergarten student to be two or three levels behind, because that's pre-preschool for them. So you can see that we had a large group of students that at the beginning of the year weren't. And that's okay, because beginning of the year is measuring kindergarten standards, and they're just starting kindergarten, so we would expect a bit of that. But look at diagnostic three, the huge swath of dark green. So we're looking at students at the end of the year in kindergarten who are mid or above grade level. That's a huge improvement. Certainly that light green, early on grade level, and then just a little bit of yellow. So we know that those are students that we're going to have to pay attention to as they move into first grade and design some really close instruction for them. So you can see just huge improvements across literacy within our iReady data. This is the exact same layout, but looking at first graders. So you can see diagnostic one in the fall. They took that in September when they came. And again, diagnostic three, huge swath of dark green, huge improvements. Kids moving up in placement levels. And then looking at those yellow and that little tiny dot of red, having to pay attention to them, obviously as first graders move into second grade. And then, lastly, our second-grade data. Again, showing huge improvements and huge gains. And this is primarily the areas in which our instructional specialists not only work with students, but they're also coaching teachers pretty intensely with regard to small group instruction. So looking ahead, I'm going to turn it back to Christine.
So where do we go next? Well, we've got some goals. We wouldn't be doing what we're doing if we didn't have goals. Sorry, going through the notes here, getting to the right spot. The data was just so impressive to me, to see that green grow and the yellow swell slower, lower. So where are we going next? So our strategies for the '24, '25 school year is that all of the instructional specialists, not just the LEO coaches, will log their coaching interactions in an app called HeadStream. We'll launch the Coaching Model Information slide deck that was created by our LEO IS coaches, and we'll launch that in October at a staff meeting. We'll increase our coaching cycle interactions with grades three to five, because we want to be able to follow those students K2 as they move through and continue that improvement that we've seen at K2. We'll use LookFor documents to set goals with teachers and reflect. So things like going into the classroom, looking and seeing what the teachers are doing in terms of small group, what anchor charts they've got up, what they're doing as far as literacy goes. The LEO coaches will attend the Advanced Coaching Literacy Network Conference that's in Grand Rapids in August. That's a yearly conference that our two LEO coaches attend. We'll focus on some coaching spotlights at each coaches' block meeting. So as instructional specialists, we also meet in a block planning format. It's been about every other month. So we'll continue to look at spotlights on what we can do as coaches effectively that's research-supported at our block meetings. And then what we'll ask the teachers to do is to choose one type of data-driven coaching cycle to participate in during the next school year. And we'll give them a menu of activities from which they can choose. And we'd like them to be able to choose something that they're going to be comfortable with, that they're going to be comfortable learning about and then implementing with our support. So that's where, after analyzing and reflecting on those analytics that you just saw, that we determined were areas for growth and our goals that we're going to focus on for next year.
Oh, that's our last slide. I thought we put a question one in there. So I'd like to open it up for the board, if there are any questions that we can help answer or any information we can share.
Mrs. Kaplan.
Mrs. Casagrande.
So I have a quick question on connection. So back on slides, I think it's 11 and 12, where you're talking about where you have those circles, and then you have, I think that's your interactions, like 41, and then that's 24%, et cetera, for your literacy focus and your coaching cycles. Am I right, when I'm looking at this, that these are the areas where you spend your time and where you interact, and you've been logging kind of where you've been spending it? And then at the end, I saw the piece where you were going to have everybody put information into the HeadStream. Is that, that's the HeadStream data?
Correct.
Okay. And then that is kind of where we spent. So are we strategically, then, as we collect this data over the years, looking at, are we spending in the right areas? How do we know that? And how does this correlate to the outcomes that we're getting on those graphs? That's kind of my big-picture question.
Exactly. So as an LEO coach that was actually doing the logging myself, we were asked by Oakland Schools, it was kind of a new process, to go ahead and log them into this computer program. We were asked to log 100 coaching cycles or 100 coaching interactions within the school year. So myself and the other LEO coach, that would be 50 each, we just logged and logged and logged. We actually went over 100. And then we're able to analyze and look, as we entered those logs, and it asks you what type of session it was. Was it a modeling session? Was it an observing session? Were you co-planning? You need to label each interaction. So that's all we were doing, is coding and labeling all the interactions that we had. And then our analytics are showing us, well, obviously, we did a lot of modeling for teachers. And then we also did a lot of co-planning with teachers. How can we, you know, dig deeper into some of these other types of interactions? And how are they going to best, you know, impact student learning for our students? So that's part of that reflection. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. I mean, I'm guessing that, again, this is your first year. So once we get multi-year data, then we'll be able to kind of see, did we spend at the same time, and where were the trends, and how did it impact?
And how did it impact?
Yeah, exactly.
That's the biggest question.
Right. To me, it's the "so what?" right?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
This is like just the beginning of the pebble in the pond, we're hoping.
A little history and then some comments. I think it was 2017, 2018, when Dr. Cook Robinson came to us, came to the School Board Association and did a presentation on this. And she said, "This is going to be a major structural change to how we do things within the county." And this is something that we, as a district, could not have done ourselves with the funding, with the resources, everything else. When you consider the fact that we are affecting every classroom, we have shared knowledge, we have support, and we have changed the format of what we have done in the past, it's a total change in life cycle. It's a total change in learning. And we truly cannot appreciate the impact of this program and the effect it will have on our students now and as we move forward. And I want to thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Siegler. I just want to make a quick comment about that. Absolutely. The partnership with Oakland Schools, with their consultants that lead this work with us, they're in constant communication with us. They're a phone call, a text, an email away when we have questions. One of the things that I do want to highlight is that how districts utilize that 35A funding to support coaching is very locally controlled. So some districts will take that 35A funding, they'll hire a coach, and then they try to spread that person across five, six buildings, right? One of the things that we know in terms of research around coaching is that relationships matter. And relationships are very important. In order to be coached, you have to have that relationship with the person. You can't be a stranger to them. You have to build a lot of trust. So in knowing that, here in Wild Lake, as we work to design this over the last several years, is, for me and the team, it was vitally important that we have an instructional specialist that functioned as a coach in every building. And that the people that were interacting in LEO were then going to bring that knowledge back and then affect coaching in every classroom and all 12 of our buildings. And that's not necessarily a system that's present in other county districts that are using this funding. So I do just want to highlight that, you know, oftentimes, as the LEO folks from Oakland Schools will comment, they'll say, "You know, Wild Lake's got it. Wild Lake's doing it right." And they do give us that positive feedback. But from a county perspective, I wholeheartedly believe that that ripple effect that Debbie mentioned and that Christine talked about impacting all of our specialists to become better coaches will affect every kid. And it doesn't happen that way in all the districts that are partnering. So I just wanted to share that. But thank you, Mr. Siegler.
Mr. Lippett.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a quick question. First off, congratulations on the success. The way, first off, you laid out from a data-driven standpoint, I was waiting for that, and you hit the sweet spot with that, and it's just lovely to see. And I absolutely echo Mr. Siegler's words about the impact that this has had and is likely to have in the future. I just might suggest also, it's lovely to see it within the vacuum of, within the LEO program, the growth you're seeing from moment to moment. It'd be great, as a board and as a community, to see this with baseline data without the LEO program and without these instructional specialists, to understand the macro impact of this program.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Lippett. And so what I'll do for the board as part of that overview of all of the data, I will include some pre-LEO data for you, with a caveat. Just know that within there, there were some COVID detours and things like that that happened, plus some curriculum implementations and rollouts and professional learning that's kind of gone along hand-in-hand with that. So I'm happy to share that baseline data, just with that little caveat that know, to know that there were a few other things that might have impacted some of that data outcome in addition to our LEO coaches. But thank you for that. I'll make sure I include that for the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're going to move on to public hearing on 2024, 2025 budget. Dr. Lanz.
I am pleased to turn it over to Ms. Sommer.
Thank you very much. I mean, it's hard to follow that act in terms of going through curriculum, and now we get to talk back to that financial ease, if you will. So the public hearing, as you may know, is a requirement of law in order to show what the funds that are being supporting the budget for the coming year. In order to talk about that, I think it's important to hit some of the highlights of what the fiscal year is that we're just... what the fiscal year is that we're just ending. So some of those that we're talking about is student enrollment. There are some very positive trends that we had originally when the budget was constructed. We were looking at a loss of 199 students or FTE, which is what our funding is based on. Based on our May state aid, we have 12,107, which that is better by 118 students. That means a lot, obviously, for our financial bottom line in regards to our funding that we receive from the state. Our schools of choice remain stable in terms of what we receive embedded in that 12,107 students. On our foundation allowance, at one particular point in time, and during the original budget, we projected 458. You must have had some really great information because we did come in at 458 on our foundation allowance. That's the increase. In terms of our state cost offsets, which those are truly funding that comes in, that we're able to actually offset our costs that are contained within our budget. That's not always the case when we get funding from the state, similar to many of the grants that we're talking about, they're restricted in purpose. These types of things are, we were able to offset costs that were in our general fund. One of those was the enrollment stabilization funds, which truly, we were able to offset our compensation increases that were embedded in our contracts. That was around 300, excuse me, the stabilization piece was 380,000. That's to offset some of our losses from our FTE loss. Transportation cost, we had over $950,000 that we were able to offset transportation. That's very significant. And then the educator compensation, which was what I was alluding to initially, is to offset some of our costs that are embedded in our contracts that were settled, and that was about $620,000. So that's almost $2 million of actual cost offsets that helps our bottom line. The problem with some of that is that those are in categoricals. So that's the ability for someone to give it and then take it away in terms of the legislature when they actually adopt the budget. So those are some at-risk areas that we were concerned about moving forward. In terms of for 2023, 24, our state grants, if you recall, last year, we had two different buckets, one for mental health and one for school safety. The state did combine those two into one pot of money with the caveat that for 2324, 50% of those funds would be spent on mental health. That particular grant is 2.8, again, restricted in purpose for those, for mental health and for safety. At risk, I know Mrs. Kowalski had mentioned those particular funds. That's a relatively new pot of money that's been made available to Wald Lake. That had a significant impact and it had a significant allocation in 2223. That money also grew by about 14%. Again, those are restricted in purpose for providing some intervention programs and those types of structures that we've been talking about relative to our curriculum and those kinds of things for identified students. 23G funds, those was a competitive grant that came across the desk for this year for kids back on track, again, based on curricular needs, academic needs, restricted in purpose, and that was about $1.4 million. Again, those are some funds that we can defer to make sure that we have the programs and structures in place that we're utilizing those funds, not only for the right purpose, but also to make sure that when we're embedding those into the curriculum and that we're using them for something that's sustainable and for, based on actual data, that makes, you know, will make a difference. Other types of income that had impact on our bottom line for 2324, interest income, that seems to be coming up quite a bit. Obviously, when we have to pay the interest, that's not so great, but when we can earn some interest on our funds that allow us to do things for kids, that's helpful for our bottom line. That came in about three times more than the original budget anticipated at $760,000 in additional funds that we had for the bottom line. Our ACT 18 funds, it comes through Oakland Schools. That was, again, offsetting our special education costs that we have in our district, that we had about a 2% increase over our original budget or about $325,000. So what does that mean for 2425, looking ahead? So we have to assume lots of things at this particular juncture because we still don't have a state budget for state aid. So we have to look at some of the information that's out there for our three different, for the legislative branches. So the first thing, which is very critical for us, is what the foundation increase is going to be. So embedded in the 2425 is an assumption of a $200 foundation increase, and that's based on the fact that the governor has proposed 241, the Senate has proposed 302, and the House has proposed 217. So 200 seems a reasonable approach, but again, we're talking about the state, so sometimes that's can reasonable, may not be reasonable in the end when we get the actual budget. In terms of student enrollment, again, the key factor for our funding from the state, we're expecting a decline in student enrollment, nothing different than schools across Michigan or across the nation relative to birth rates and those types of things. That's not an outflow, it's really a reflection of our birth rates. We take a look at Plant and Moran, provides us some enrollment projections based on a fair amount of data, not only birth rates, but looking at the climate and culture in Wald Lake, what is happening economically, those types of things, as well as the age of our population. So based on that, as well as a model that we received from the MSU professor, we're looking at a student count next year for 11,864, which represents roughly 243 in a decline in student enrollment. Again, nothing unusual, and unfortunately, in this environment, and we certainly hope that we have the same experience as we did this year and that we have a better student count than expected. Again, we'll find out in the fall, in October, when we actually have that student count. For next year, we also, the state cost offsets, we take a look at that again and say, what's actually in, we're receiving now in state aid, what are they telling us based on the line item budget that we spent a lot of time looking at? What things have been removed? What things are added? What things are still there? So the hold harmless categorical, which is unique to our area to a certain extent, that is going to be reduced by about 50% or $330,000. They removed that from the budget, but it's a phase-out process. Additional cost offsets, we just talked about, the employee compensation offset, that is not in any of the three proposals, so we've removed that. And that equates to, as I mentioned previously, about $620,000. The transportation and the enrollment stabilization appear to be in all three proposals, so we've kept some kind of placeholder in our revenue for that. We'll see what happens, right? In terms of retirement changes, that's the big thing on the table. This can be a possible revenue generator. It could be a possible reduction in the district cost. There's proposals that the state is actually going to take some cost savings for a portion of the retirement fund that is overfunded at this point in time and shift that around and utilize it in some way to give back to the districts in what they see fit. That is this opportunity at this point in time to reach out to our legislature and say, we need it in the district's hands, so the district can decide where to spend that money. So to reduce that true cost to the district by the retirement rate percentage. So at this point in time, we've left it status quo, meaning that we've left our rates the same as far as expenses concerned, left the cost offsets we received through state aid the same at this juncture. That obviously, there's a lot to be seen on exactly what happens in that arena. So stay tuned, I guess is the message on that one. In terms of other revenue, again, the ACT 18 funds, we received an estimate from Oakland Schools, and it appears that next year is a 4.4% increase. We've had some adjustments in the years past. We'll see what happens in 2425 at the end of the day. We've talked a lot about over the years, these federal grants. Well, it's time. Now that the rubber has met the road and that there's, those are sunsetting in September 30th, we're talking about the ESSER funds, the COVID money, all of those kinds of things. The strategy has been to utilize those funds where appropriate to offset the costs that are in the budget and, again, strategically build up that fund balance for the day that's coming, knowing that as we go, we try to make sure that we're looking very responsibly at those costs, but those were programs that were necessary for our students to be able to not just survive, but thrive. So those are going to be hitting back into the general fund, but those are some things that we're looking at. Currently, that, as far as utilization into 2425, we're looking at a decline of about $5 million. And again, provided some detail, a level of detail of all of the grants that are in there. Grants are great from the standpoint of view that they don't necessarily, the revenue equals expenditures, but it's what they can, we can do with those grants that makes a difference. In terms of the interest income, again, we'll see that impact next year, but unfortunately, we're kind of looking at that decreasing with the anticipation that interest rates will decline over the year. Additionally, from play to play, pay to play, that is not something that we're looking to change next year, but just to kind of keep it on the radar as we look for reevaluating those types of things. Personnel expenditures for Wald Lake, that's in excess of 80%. Salaries and benefits is in excess of 80%. Now, for some districts, that might be a little bit higher typically than the 80% mark, but keep in mind, we do have some contracted services within Wald Lake, so that brings it down a little bit, but that is a significant portion of our budget, as it well should be. Certainly, we can't deliver the instruction and we can't provide the support for the instruction that takes place in the classrooms and the other programs for our students without having pupil. So what's embedded in the personnel expenses are the settled contracts that we have for all of our bargaining units. We will be looking ahead 2425 to talk to our teachers again, since that will be the last year of that particular contract, but those increases are in there as well. PA 152, which provides the hard cap on our health insurance that we're allowed to pay for each of our individual employees, that's set by the state. We don't get any influence on that. They look at some inflationary factors. Unfortunately, sometimes it may be a little bit of a lag as we all experience those health insurance costs, and we certainly try to, my understanding certainly being relatively new, but to look for those options for where we can for our employees to have a no-cost option that's below that cap. That may or may not be possible, and certainly, that has an impact on the type of coverage that can be offered. But again, looking forward, trying to make sure that we look at all options possible and where there might be an opportunity for cost savings to our employees, since we don't get, like I had mentioned, we don't get to pick that cap. As mentioned, in terms of the grants, in terms of personnel, we know that there's positions that are coming back to the general fund. So we're looking at that, you'll see that impact on the bottom line, particularly when we're looking at pupil support services, because that's where a lot of those dollars from the ESSER funds, we were able to spend that money and offset those costs going forward. Terms of technology, I don't think we can ever have instruction. I mean, all of us seem to have computers sitting in front of us now, right? So in the classroom, and with not only our students, but our teachers, and the backbone of that technologies is critical. As that grows in our classrooms, we also need to have the support outside of the classroom for that technology. And that's something that we can't always rely on outside of, because we need that immediate response. So there's been, again, a strategic initiative to strengthen that technology department, and rightfully so, so that we can make sure that we have the appropriate things in place to make sure the technology works for our staff and our students moving forward. Other expenses that are embedded in there, and again, sometimes these seem like minor things, but there's certainly, the inflationary factors have an effect on our bottom line. Property insurance, I think that was mentioned last year, there was a very healthy insurance increase last year relative to that. The continued increase in values of our replacement values and insurance, and certainly the pressures on the insurance industry, looking at an 8% increase in the property insurance for 2425. Utility and fuel costs, no differently than at our home, we have to have those operational costs embedded in our budget. We're looking at about a 4.5% increase in those costs. And then for contracted services, contracted services represent primarily people that help support our district. They're having the same cost pressures that we do in attracting talent. In order to attract talent, we need to increase those costs and increase their salaries, so that has to be passed on in some way, shape, or form. They can't absorb that. So those are embedded as well into the budget. So having said all of those budget assumptions and many, many, many more that go into comprising the budget and trying to make sure the board and the public is educated on that, the bottom line for 2425 looks relatively simple, right? But it's not. So when we look at our sources of revenue, we have 186,542,277 comprised of local sources, state sources, federal sources, inter-district sources, and proceeds from financing, which that proceeds from financing looks a little strange, but it's really a gasp-y pronouncement that shows that you have to do these crazy things that really don't mean anything in public education, but they want you to look like a businessman their financial statements. So it's a little misleading that 626,000, we don't get 626,000 because it goes right out on the other end in the expense side of things. In terms of expenditures, again, the very simplified approach, but each one of those, what we call functions, represents a lot of people, a lot of work that is done for the students and staffs, staff within our district, and that totals up to 194,735,875. I reflect, again, I have the ESSER grants little notation down there because, again, this is the impact that you're seeing of those ESSER grants going away into the new year, and certainly, again, very strategic that Wald Lake built up that fund balance to absorb those costs moving forward. Talking about that fund balance, again, this is a summary, but you'll notice on the projected fund balance for June 30th of '24, which is what we're anticipating ending this fiscal year, that cushion is reflected in there. The projected fund balance for June 30th of '25 is $19,165,807, which represents a healthy 10.3% fund balance based on revenues. So again, it sometimes can be a little bit misleading when your revenue number is so large because of the fact that that's that denominator. But again, I believe that the target here is 6%, so we're certainly well within, well above that range moving, based on these projections at the end of 2425. Now we talk about the tax levies because that's what really this, this public hearing is all about, is in terms of what is supporting a portion of this budget, is we have the hold harmless millages back this year, the state had been covering it up to this particular point in time, and there is a portion in 2425 that has continued to be covered by that previous coverage by the state. But for principal residents, qualified agricultural, qualified forest, and industrial personal, it'll be .3086 mills, which means if you had an accessible value of $100,000, that's $30.86 per year. The commercial personal is 5.0547 mills. All other properties is 16.7461, which is the same as last year. There was no headly rollback on that, and the rate of inflation that was used for headly is 1.051%. For the sinking fund, that was subject to headly rollback this year. The voters voted .5. That has been rolled back to .4981 for the 2025-26, 2425 taxable year, which is proposed to generate about $3.3 million for use in specifically for sinking fund projects. Nothing beyond that, no operational. The debt fund levy, as indicated during the bond campaign, has dropped from 4.13 to 4.05 for the next taxable year, which is projected to generate $27,476,436. Again, that is restricted for utilization for paying on the debt for the district. So nothing more, nothing less. And that concludes my presentation, but I'd be happy to entertain any comments or questions.
I feel like I did a segue to this at the last board meeting when we were talking about it, and the unfortunate part is nothing has changed. We, as a board, had to have our budget in months ago. We are actually still sitting in limbo. We are on, we are basically into summer recess in Lansing, and we have no idea what's going to happen until everybody comes back and the governor decides she is or is not going to sign this. And we're also still waiting for the, if I am correct, we're still waiting for the consensus revenue estimates?
We did get those in May.
We did get them, okay.
They were not, not great.
They weren't great.
They were very, there's still money in the funds, but it's not as robust as it has been in the past, which is why I believe that they're recommending around the more the $200 mark for the foundation increase.
And, you know, when I, when you talk about ESSER funds, we took a very cautious approach as a district. I know, in talking to several of my colleagues from other districts within Oakland County, they- they have massive cuts because of how they spent their ESSER funds and how they put them in the school. You know, you talked about school of choice, we actually have a 5% cap on our school of choice, and we also will lock out schools when we look at that, if we feel it's going to have an effect on the population of the school. You know, the big issue for us is our timeline, and I would also say this is probably the first time that, looking at Plant Moran over all these years, with the exception of the COVID year, that they actually were off that much to our benefit, and I hope they're off again this year to our benefit, so.
As do I.
Thank you, because I know this, I mean, it's very difficult, we're, you know, we're juggling the balls right now, and we're waiting for Lansing to come and say, this is not what you're getting, this is how you can plan for your next school year. Well, we're already planning for our next school year, we're already contracting services, we're already paying, planning ahead, you know, we will go into contracts, we have a contract with our staff next year, you know, when we gave the raises on this current contract, for me, it was a breath of fresh air, because our staff in this district was giving and giving and giving, and it was our first opportunity to, as a board, to give back, and I have this ill feeling, we're going to take a step backwards if we don't see something else out of Lansing, even though we know there are funds there, they just have to be allocated in the right direction. And, you know, I know I'm standing on a soapbox when I talk about the school aid fund, but the other thing that people have to realize is we are not a for-profit institution, yet money is coming from the school aid fund to fund colleges and universities. And it really still, I still can't understand who, what, where, when, and why. I probably never will, but that's one of the things that we really have to work at changing in the future, to get the money back to where it should be. Thank you.
Mrs. Kaplan?
Mrs. Cussagrande.
So a couple of things, I know we had some questions prior to coming here today from a board member or two about the fund balance history, so I was looking in my handy-dandy budget book that we have, and I know just from the history that I'm here, that we were, and you have it here, and Mrs. Les left it for us as well, that, you know, we were at one point down to 5.26, right?
That's correct.
And we're up at 10.8, last year we were at 12.76%. So to Mr. Siegler's point, I understand, and again, a question that we had that came from a board member was, aren't we supposed to be at this, you know, certain percentage, which is much higher than that? Kind of a little outdated as to what, you know, we've been seeing, so I appreciated your feedback on that and Dr. Bernier's feedback on that. So I just wanted to, I guess, kind of publicly say, we've asked those questions, we know that there's a history here, and what we have put in place for fund balance, and we knew we were going to hit, we were being proactive, looking that ESSER was going to go away. So we have more in our coffers than some, right, who are looking at that. Now, there's others who, you know, have a much higher foundation, you know, allowance than we do, right? We never got to take advantage of that two-by-two, you know, we never quite met that sweet spot, right, so we didn't get as much as other people. But I guess I just want to say thank you for continuing the, just the history of us looking at and the protocol of being conservative as we look at things. I mean, we could go as high as, like when you were mentioning, you know, the highest, you know, senate budget, you know, but instead, we kind of take that, you know, middle to the low end, being conservative and saying, well, we might think we'll get an extra 200, and then we budget from there, because we don't know yet. So one, I want to just say thank you, and then bring forward that we actually are in much better shape than we have been in many years, which is because of good work by all of you. The other thing I wanted, just a clarification on, at the beginning, you were talking about 199 students that we had projected fewer, and then we came in better by 118. Does that mean that we only lost 71 students-ish? Is that the, is that the message?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I did get that correct, okay. And then this year, we're looking at, again, projecting 200-plus students fewer, and then we'll just have to see, obviously, how that comes in, and we'll know that in the fall or in the winter?
Well, in October, because our count, blend account is based on the current February and then October, so we have a small known quantity, but the problem is, is the February is only worth 10% versus the 90% of what happens in the fall and October.
Great, thank you, appreciate it.
Mr. Siegler?
You know, piggybacking on what Mrs. Cussagrande said, again, a little history, I want to say it was roughly tooth, the year 2000, we had almost, and, you know, you can think, if you look back and think about budgets and buildings and everything else, our budget was, I want to say, right around $140 million back then, maybe a little bit more, give or take, but we had $26 million in our fund equity. And literally, that was when we, when we started doing budget cuts back then, I used to joke that it was a dictionary, because there were so many pages and so many line items and everything else. And over the years, we worked it down, and it worked out, and it got to a point where, at one point in time, we looked at a budget that had gone from dictionary size to basically two pages with everything else, you know, because we had cut so many programs that we were able to offer at that time, and, you know, as Mrs. Cussagrande said, you know, being at 5.2, you know, we had taken our line of credit, which we have done every year, we did not have to exercise it, but we were very close many times of looking at it, and to be back at the percentage we're at right now, I actually want to thank you and Mrs., you and Mrs. Les and everybody else that's been involved, because it's taken a lot of work to get to where we were, even though we have to give some of it back, and thank you.
Again, I can't take credit for that, it's certainly a team effort, and certainly the people at this table that make the policies, make those things happen, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, we're going to move on to public commentary. Thank you for asking to speak to the board tonight, this is your chance to address the board, and note, this is a time for the board to listen to your statements, your questions, your concerns, it's not a time for us to have conversation with board members. If follow-up is necessary, a member of the superintendent's staff or a board member will get back with you. Please pay attention to the three-minute clock that's on the wall over here, and if you're getting close to the end, please wrap up your comments, and please note that we want people to be polite and no personal attacks. So with that, we're going to start with Ms. Gabby Tiaga.
I was hoping for a second. Hello, and thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Gabby Tiaga. When I spoke at the last meeting, no joke, I was super nervous and felt a bit alone. The joys of this time of the year are divide and conquer, and my son had a lacrosse game, which we won, by the way, and my husband was there. Don't get me wrong, I was getting all the texts for him, breathe, you've got this, and the very obvious, I love you. I said what I said, and I sat back down, shaking a bit, getting ready to text my people. Then these random ladies sitting behind me tapped me on my shoulder. I won't lie, I braced for impact, and instead, I got the opposite. They told me I did a good job, I spoke well, and my message was clear. I thanked them with some mist in my eyes. They said they had daughters who are athletes in this district, and if this was happening, they would be in your office with words. I stated, it's coming. For a moment, it made me feel like a bit of a fear monger, but it indeed is coming. We sat there, and I listened to the rest of the meeting. When I got up to leave, I thanked them for their kind words and reminded them to think about it, think how they would feel if this was their girls. So here I am again, speaking for the safety and dignity of our girls. This past month, I had the opportunity to sub at CHS in their CI room, for people who understand those acronyms, and that required me to help some of the kids with their day-to-day work. At one point, science was on the roster, and while I looked over the papers, I noticed that the kids were working on genomes and chromosomes. These students were learning that XX equals girls, daughters, and XY, boys, sons, and it hit me that this is the science that this board and this cabinet approved, this is the science that's being taught to our kids. In the name of following the science, this district and members of this board, not all, but some, and including the new incoming superintendent, closed the schools to protect the children, enforced max mandates to protect the children, and enforced all the other guidelines in the name of protecting the children. I ask, in the name of following the science, why is this district, this board, and these cabinet members not protecting our girls, not protecting them financially, mentally, and physically? Why are you not setting policies that would ensure their safeties like before? So once again, I'm here today to call upon this board to not be a district of schools, but to be a school district that stands behind the safety and dignity of our girls. Thank you.
Mike Wise. Okay, can we move on?
Hey, everyone, I'm Suzy Crafton, I live in Novi, and I'm a direct constituent of the district. I'm a proud parent of a Wild Lake Western student, and I just wanted to thank the board and the cabinet for the hard work you've done at the Wild Lake Western campus, and I also want to give a huge shout-out to the teachers that are living a very hard moment as they pack up years of their possessions to move out of their academic facilities and into the new beautiful ones. It's hot work over there right now, it's messy, it's not real glamorous, and I know tomorrow I'll be there helping teachers pack up on the last day. So thank you for all the hard work, the Wild Lake Western community appreciates it, and teachers are putting in hard work to get ready for next year. Thanks so much.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Mara Freund, and I am here again to speak on behalf of the Adult Transitions Program. I have a 22-year-old son, his name is Andrew, and I'm sure some of you of the members have heard from him by emails. Sometimes it's just a hi, sometimes it's just a cluster of random letters, so I have a message from him, and probably it's going to be a little bit more clear. Andrew was born with a very regenerative condition, and he has been diagnosed with autism as well. He has physical and cognitive limitations, however, this doesn't stop him from advocating for himself. So he asked me to come today to the school board meeting and deliver a message, quote, "The ATP needs a home, and it's long overdue. Having bedrooms that don't float a lot, like the ones we have right now, would be very nice," unquote. I cannot agree with him more. The Adult Transitions Program has a long history of neglect, of being neglected and forgotten. Too many details and too much information to share tonight, because I just have three minutes. Now, with the passing of the new bond, we are eager and more than ready to continue working with the school board and the administrators in order to provide our young adults with special needs what they deserve, a place that they can call home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to congratulate all the graduates that graduated on Sunday, I'm sure you all enjoyed that day. But I'm Christine Titus, I'm a 32-year resident of Commerce Township and a proud instructional specialist at Hickory Woods Elementary. My topic tonight has to do with teacher leadership, and what I love about this district is you've empowered us as teachers to take on leadership roles, and that's, that's an awesome opportunity for us to, to work with our colleagues in that capacity. But I particularly want to talk about Galileo. Over 25 years ago, nine superintendents from southeast Michigan had a vision, they had a vision to leverage teacher leadership to create high levels of learning for all, and it was at that time with the funding from a grant from the Kellogg Foundation that the Galileo Teacher Leadership Academy was designed and implemented. The two-year Teacher Leadership Academy is a transformative personal and professional journey for teachers in the tri-county area. Wild Lake participates in Galileo and has since 1997. I'm a Galileo graduate, I was one of the only, I was the, in the only three-year Galileo cohort, they gave us an extra year because of COVID, so I feel fortunate for that learning. My husband asked me, as we were driving together one night, if this was transformative for me, and I thought a moment, and then I answered absolutely yes, it was, and continues to be. As an example, I look at assessment differently due to one of our speakers, Rick Wormley. I'd give a test, grade it, and in most cases, move on, reteaching when necessary. However, it's not about a one-and-done assessment, as we've talked so much about when kids are taking their assessments, whether it's M-step, I-ready, a math test, a social studies test, a science test, it's, that's a moment in time. And so it's about the opportunities that we give our students to show us what they can do, and realizing that sometimes that takes time. So it's about understanding cultural differences when it comes to writing. Japanese students don't use articles in their writing, in their speaking in Japan, we expect them to do the and a, and that's not part of their normal cultural piece. And math instruction, math is math is math all over, but there's differences. For instance, some PEMDAS, please excuse my dear Aunt Sally, in England, it's called BODMAS, and the B stands for brackets or braces instead of parentheses. So it's about recognizing that uniqueness of our students and teaching into that as we also teach the state expected standards. I'm envious of our newest Wild Lake Galileo cohort that goes to retreat later this month, and I'm excited for them and the journey they begin into teacher leadership. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Tim Sawmiller, Commerce Township, using pronouns he, him, and his. Happy Pride Month. Tuesday, I attended my eldest grandson's fifth-grade promotion ceremony at Pembroke Elementary in Birmingham. I wanted to share Principal Susan Crocker's words of wisdom that she imparted to those fifth graders. I have her permission to do so. We all could benefit from these words. One of the most important lessons I hope we've taught you is to see the good in everyone. It is easy to judge and criticize, but it takes true strengths to look beyond the surface and find the positive qualities within others, and not just for your friends and family, but the strengths in all others, everyone with whom you come in contact. Success is not a destination, but a journey. It is not measured solely by accomplishments, recognition, or praise, it is measured by the growth and personal development that you experience along the way. Embrace every opportunity to learn, to grow, and to evolve into the best version of yourself. Today, I want you to know that we all have a superpower. Our superpower lies in the power of choice. Choose to approach each day with a positive mindset, understanding that your attitude shapes your experiences and influences those around you. In a world where you can be anything, let kindness be your chosen path. Lift others up, celebrate their growth, and be a positive presence in their lives. I also urge you to choose respect. Treat every individual with the respect they deserve, regardless of their background, beliefs, or differences. Be a person of integrity, strive to be dependable, and extend empathy and kindness to those around you. Remember, it is not just about demanding these qualities from others, it is about making the choice to live them yourself. Choose to smile, let your positivity shine, and be so focused on your own self-improvement that you have no time to criticize others. See the strength in others and lean into those strengths. Value the unique qualities and talents that each person possesses. By doing so, you will foster an environment of inclusivity, appreciation, where everyone feels valued and supported. Everyone belongs. Love is a verb, an action that goes beyond words. It is not just a feeling confined to the heart, but a deliberate choice to care, support, and cherish another person. Love is seen in the small acts of kindness, the sacrifices made, and the effort put in to make someone feel loved and appreciated. It is about showing up, being present, and actively participating in someone's life. Love is not passive, it is an active force that brings joy, healing, and connection. So let us not just speak of love, but let our actions speak louder, for love truly is a verb. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Burnett? Michelle Burnett.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Burnett, and I'm the mother of an Adult Transition Program student and a Wild Lake Northern graduate. You may remember me from a few months back. I spoke to the differences our special education students embrace versus that of the general education students. I spoke specifically about ATP and how they are no longer included in the Wild Lake Western building improvements. After a further review of the old documents that were available on the district website, it was noted that our transitions program would be part of the Wild Lake Western 2019 bond, but that didn't happen. In May, our district passed a $250 million bond to improve facilities with very little wording to specifically address our ATP students. So we are here again to make sure you do not forget about our population of important students. In just a few days, there will be a vision that everyone can see when they drive down Beck Road: a beautiful new facility to house the general education students and a few remnants of an old building that will be under construction, where our transition program students will be housed for their learning environment. Is that Wild Lake's version of inclusion or discrimination? In addition, we are hoping that the facility will be safe for our students and staff. I expect Wild Lake will ensure that. I see firsthand the anxiety that is setting in in our students as the present learning environment is interrupted by construction and uncertainty. There is concern for where they will be in the future. Our ATP students were continually reminded that they are not part of that new building. All you need to do is watch the Wild Lake Western morning announcements to see the great things happening at Wild Lake Western, except that's not for our students. In addition, drive around the district and see all these beautiful new facilities for athletic team rooms. Our visiting teams now have a great new space to have their 15-minute halftime meeting while our ATP students struggle for adequate learning facilities where they spend every day learning. The bond has been passed. Our students deserve a state-of-the-art facility with what is provided to our general education population. A couple of transition program parents and our PAC president have spent the past couple of months meeting with Dr. Bernia to ensure our ATP students get the learning environment they deserve and what the district has communicated with the taxpayers. We felt we were starting to make progress. However, over the last month, the district has had a lot of change, and our communication went almost silent. So we are back here needing to advocate for our population. We welcome the new superintendent, Dr. Lanz, new cabinet members, new board members, to our district. But we are here, and we want our students and staff to have what they deserved and what they are promised, and we will not be forgotten or misled again. We expect and look forward to working as a team with Dr. Lanz and our Assistant Superintendent of Special Services to ensure our students get the promised state-of-the-art facility and resources to support the continued growth in this program. Does every child, every day, include special education? Thank you.
Thank you. Sue Ellen Keith.
Hello, my name is Sue Ellen Keith. I am the costume designer over at Wild Lake Central and soon to be the costume designer also at Wild Lake Western. And I am here today to tell you about last Saturday's Sutton Foster Awards. So we had six students participating in the Sutton Foster Awards from all three high schools. Sutton Foster Awards are the Tony, uh, high school version of Tonys for the state of Michigan. Of those six participants, they, well, this year, they had 66 schools participating with 121 participant, student participants. We, um, sorry. They gathered at a one-day workshop and a two-day interview and review, uh, review session of their talents in acting, singing, and dancing, and then culminated in a performance at the Wharton Center in Lansing. Northern students Truman Columbus and Emily Arabo, Central students J.J. Rochon, Tatiana Goffey, and Western students Olivia Cortez and Isaac Martin performed in several group numbers. Truman and J.J. were also able to do characterizations from their performances from Nice Work and Drowsy Chaperone. These segments were put together so that these students were judged, and in the hopes that they would continue on to the Jimmy Awards, which is in New York City. As well as this, we had adjudicators come to each performance of the 66 shows with ratings of the schools participating. Wild Lake Central was ranked number one in outstanding music direction and outstanding choreography, so I would also like to congratulate Ms. Blumer and Ms. Zaleski for their outstanding work for the Drowsy Chaperone. All of this was done, um, well, let's just say, Western was, this was their first year participating. Northern and Central, this is their second year participating, and we would like to do more with this. So I'm hoping that this will continue, and I'm asking you to consider reinstating the performing arts in the middle schools and elementary schools so we can continue to do these in the future and give these students coming up the same opportunities that these students had this last weekend. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Smith.
Good evening, Michael Smith, longtime White Lake Township resident and proud parent of a Dublin and CHS student. Thank you. First, I want to congratulate to all the graduates and the parents. You made it. Enjoy your summer, be safe, and good luck on their future journey. Second, as a personal note, I wanted to come here and thank Mrs. Kovac and Mrs. Beege, who I saw was on the agenda for, who either be retiring or moving on to new adventures. The Dublin community appreciates all that they have done over the years, and thank you, of course, to all the other retirees, because as I, he already left, but Mr. Froning, he was one of my teachers, so it was wonderful to see him. He was one of my history teachers back at Central when he was first, a young, young guy, so. Thank you to all the teachers and staff. You change the lives of our children daily, and I appreciate you. You go above and beyond each day, not only educate our children, but you serve as mentors, caregivers, advocates, and provide empathy and compassion. And I just want to take the moment to appreciate all that they do this past year, all that they always do, and I really hope that they have a summer full of recharging to move forward in this fall. So, thank you. I'll see you on Monday.
Thank you. We're going to move on to administrative commentary. Dr. Lanz.
Thank you very much. Ms. Muir.
Thank you, Dr. Lanz. Just wanted to highlight, it has been a very busy year in special services in the district, and we've had some really great things happening along with some really difficult work. We have great staff that have collaborated with committee work, with improving change of level processes for students, so parents can understand where their students are going to be attending programs in the fall, to lots of listening session opportunities with parents to give feedback about expanding program locations. And some of that work with our supervisors and teachers collaborating on curriculum alignment, as well as other program enhancements. So just want to mention it because our staff is great, supervisors are great, we have lots of great things planned for the upcoming year, and lots of work to do moving forward.
Thank you. Mr. Sheffield.
Thank you, Dr. Lanz. Yeah, it was great to see our Golden Apple Award winners. Leah Nelson is the food service server at Wickham Elementary. And interestingly, speaking with Julie Fortner earlier this week, she informed me that in a typical year, we serve about 800,000 meals to students throughout the district. This year, with the Universal Meal Program, by the time we finish tomorrow with our final meal, that will be 1.25 million meals that we will have served this week. So I just wanted to acknowledge Leah and all of the other kitchen and cafeteria workers in Wild Lake School. They have done a tremendous job in an environment where we are still challenged with getting help, and everybody has really picked up slack, and we're just very pleased that we're able to provide what is clearly a needed service for the students of Wild Lake.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Russo.
Thank you, Dr. Lanz. As part of the consensus agenda tonight, I just want to highlight there are two administrative appointments that I'd like to, like to address and highlight for a minute. It's my pleasure to recommend Brian Dennis to the position of District Network Administrator. Brian has worked with the Wild Lake Schools for, for about a decade through a third-party company, and we are thrilled to bring him on board as a direct employee. It's also my pleasure to announce the recommendation for hire for Mrs. Jennifer Van Wagnen to the post of principal at Sarah Banks Middle School, pending your approval. Mrs. Van Wagnen has served as principal of Meadowbrook Elementary for the past three years, and was previously an elementary principal and middle school science teacher in Brooklyn, Michigan. Jennifer has won Teacher of the Year for three consecutive years while she taught in, in Brooklyn, Michigan, at the middle school, in, in science at the middle school level. Ms. Van Wagnen has earned a certificate in Leading for Justice and Equity from Eastern Michigan University, holds a master's degree from Central Michigan University, and a bachelor of science from Michigan State University. Thank you, Dr. Lanz.
Thank you, sir, and thank you to your team. There'll be amazing additions. Ms. Homer.
I think you've heard from me enough, so I'm all set. Thank you, Dr. Lanz.
Thank you. Mrs. Kowalski.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Lanz. I just want to take a moment to thank all of our staff and hope that they have a great summer. We've really worked incredibly hard this year, focused on our goals, focused on alignment of systems, and it's really making a difference. It's showing a difference in our data, and I look forward to sharing the outcomes of that with the board in the coming weeks as we compile that. But just want to congratulate our staff across the district for a really great year, a lot of hard work, but a lot of student success to go along with it, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kowalski. Mr. Durkin.
Nothing this evening, Dr. Lanz.
Thank you, sir. I know that the board is aware, but the community might not be aware, that my name is Mike Lanz, and I'm filling in for Dr. Bernia today, taking the place of him, as he is with his nephew, watching his nephew graduate today. So that's fantastic he has that opportunity. Like all the cabinet members, I have, I am visiting many of our districts at, at the end of the school year, and I'd like to share one story from Meadowbrook, actually. I was walking down the hallway, and two of my second-grade friends were there, and they were out working on taking down a bulletin board, and I asked them what grade they were in, and that's why I know they're in second grade, and I said, "Oh, you ladies must be very excited to go to third grade." And they both spun around and said, "No, we're not," like in unison. I'm like, "Wow, okay, I didn't expect that answer." I said, "Well, why is that?" And the one said, "Now we have to take the M-step." I'm like, "Well, yes, and, and you? How about you?" She goes, "Well, now we're big third graders. Now we have to do this adulting thing." And it's not often I'm at a loss for words, but I'm like, "Okay, nice to see you. Have a great summer." Yeah, right. So, thank you, Ms. Kemp.
Thank you. We're going to move on to board commentary. Mr. Lippett.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I will tell you, having not been on the board for two weeks, it's, it's pretty, pretty hilarious to be thrown right in the fire, right? And you get the benefit of being on the board for one second, and then suddenly you're graduating people. It's, it's, I, that's a good gig. If anyone can keep that gig going, I'd like to learn how to keep that going. I just want to say a couple of comments about graduation, because that was a really impressive moment for me this past week. First, I want to focus about the Adult Transitions Program, because I do want, I want to say to those of you in the audience, and I only speak for myself, I don't speak for the rest of the board, we hear you, we see you. What we saw last week was inspiring. For those of you who have not been in the presence of what's achieved through this program, it is nothing short of inspirational and important. So, speaking only for myself, but I would, I would say that I will continue to encourage, reinforce, and design to the best I can a vision for a future for ATP. Second, I just want to talk about general graduation. I had the benefit of the board, various board members kind of giving me hints and little, little thoughts about what I should expect over the course of that long day, three separate graduations and the nonsense that happens in between. You guys don't see what happens in between the graduations, but that's as much fun as what, what happens actually in the graduations. But I will just say this, I know you know this, but I'm just going to say it for the record, we are graduating an incredible group of people amongst all three of the high schools. There is subtle differences. It was interesting to see just how exuberant and lovely these kids are. There were no incidents, by the way, nothing that you can be embarrassed or sad about. It was just, it was a terrific thing. And I will tell you, just as a final note, I did learn what the Western one clap was, and I will be bringing that to my home and business, so. So I want to thank all those Western grads for bringing that to my side of the world, so thank you very much.
Mrs. Fernandez.
Thank you. Yes, we're all still recovering from graduation. It's a long and beautiful day, and congratulations, parents of graduating students and anyone who just was fortunate enough to get their kid through the year successfully. And take a little breath before, congratulations, teachers. Summer well-earned, and we hope you get some rest and recharge and, and feel good about the year that you've had. Thanks, everyone.
Mr. Seigler.
Echoing on what my colleagues have said, I always find it amazing to go to graduation. I say, if you ever want to recharge, go to a graduation ceremony or go into kindergarten on the first day, and you'll forever be recharged for the year. And it truly was, you know, as Mr. Lippett said, there were no incidents. The students were very professional and appreciative of being there. The parents, the Eastern Michigan facility, I mean, we are fortunate as a district that we can achieve all three graduations in one day. Yes, it is long when your board meets for breakfast at 8:30 in the morning and doesn't get home till nine at night, but that's okay, because that's part of the enjoyment. Cause and effect is the next day when you're moving around, as I was talking to Mrs. Kaplan, and she feels I had, she says, "I had such a workout." And I said, "Well, think about it this way, you probably shook 550 hands, and you're moving your, twisting and moving your body during the course of the day." And, you know, we're not, none of us are used to that, so I'm sorry. But, you know, again, truly phenomenal. I am very appreciative of what we are working at and achieving as a board. I know we have one more seat to fill, and I look forward to the interview process for that coming up. And I just want to thank all of our teachers who are retiring and our administrators. And Jennifer, you know, it's very rough for me, because I am part of that Meadowbrook population. And I will tell you that I have some very upset and mad neighbors right now, because you are leaving the building and you will truly be missed, but I told them, "You're still here, so thank you."
Mrs. Cassie Grandi.
So I want to talk a little bit about the ATP graduations. So Mr. Lippett talked about it a little bit, and Mrs. Kaplan and Mr. Lippett and I were there, and I remember a few things. One, it was the first time I didn't cry. Two, I think I had just a proud smile on my face. Some of the things, again, as Mr. Lippett said, unless you've been there, you don't understand. So to hear that there were several of our graduates from ATP who are going to go to be interns at Henry Ford Hospital, how phenomenal, right? For the kids and our students who are in the back just waiting with joy to be able to sing a song and use sign language and share and celebrate all the other graduates. And as we came in and out, so many students who were truly so happy for us to be there and saying hello and saying goodbye to us. One of our statements in our mission statement here at Wild Lake is to talk about how we want our students to be citizens and, and productive and part of community, et cetera. And I can't remember, and I won't remember exactly how it was put, but I believe it was by the Assistant Principal Kristen Wright, who made a comment about our students there at ATP, and, and it was something to the effect of, and I'm paraphrasing, that, you know, "Please allow our students to take the risk and to be part of community, and, and don't be afraid of how they will integrate. They will find a way to integrate." So I just learn every time something when I go to, to that graduation, and I just wanted to, to shout out that I don't, to me, it doesn't matter that you are in the physical space right now of Western, you are your own program, right? And it's extremely important, and we're growing in that area. So I am very thrilled to see that our bond passed and hopeful that we will be able to do something wonderful for you. So that's one. Two, I had a, everyone, and when you go to graduation, to the, the graduation day of the, the general education students and not the ATP, sometimes you're just looking for that one or two students who you know, so you can try to hand them that, that diploma. Well, my, all of my boys have graduated, but once in a while, there's somebody who I know. So I was fortunate enough to go to the Michigan Week Breakfast, and I sat with a young gentleman, his name was Ethan. And I sat next to his mom, and his dad was across from me, and we were talking, and I said to him, I said, "And I will give you your diploma." I am happy to say that I found Ethan at Wild Lake Western. I said, "Hey, Ethan, hi, I told you, I'm going to give you your diploma." I said, "Congratulations." And I think the look on his face was just perfect, like, "Oh, wow, yeah, you did say that. Wow, okay, that, yeah, that's who you are." And that connection. And that's just the one story, but, but it's being able to, you know, shake those hands, see them come up. Sometimes they're nervous, sometimes they're excited. Sometimes they're nervous, sometimes they're excited, you know, just, they're all over, all over the board, but to be able to give Ethan his diploma was pretty cool. But this is the fun part of our job at the end of the year, so thank you.
Well, I would be remiss if I didn't talk about graduation as well, and it is, and it's an amazing experience. I did attend the ATP, and again, the tears. You are very emotional, and I would encourage everyone to go see an ATP graduation, because it is very, very moving. We not only had regular graduation, we have all the fifth-grade graduations and eighth-grade graduations, moving up ceremonies. So, congratulations to all those kids, and the graduation itself was a phenomenal experience. The kids and the families were so well-behaved and exuberant. It was a great time. I also had the pleasure last night to attend, excuse me, adult ed graduation that was held over at Milford High School, and that is another moving and exciting experience to see some of these adults that, one gentleman, 40 years was waiting to get his high school diploma, and he graduated last night. And just the exuberance from them as well is just amazing. So, anytime you get to experience any of those things around our county, around our district, around, out there, please, take the opportunity. It is a moving and touching experience to see all of that. I wish all of the students a great summer. The parents, sorry, teachers, thank you. Thank you very much for all that you've done. One more day, and then hopefully you guys can put your feet up, and someone will take care of you guys for a little bit. So, thank you, and thank you all. Okay, we're going to move on to the Consent Agenda. We have Approval of the Minutes, the Proposed May 10, 2024 Board Special Committee Workshop and Proposed 2024 Special Meeting Minutes. We have Personnel Recommendations, Administrative Appointments, Resignations, Financial Reports for April 2024, Disbursements in the Amount of $19,226,571. We have Purchases Under $50,000. We have the District Curriculum Supports K2 Let's Gather Bundles Heinemann for $38,963.63 coming from the General Fund. We have the Alternative Curriculum, Elementary Annual Renewal of the Encore K12 Teach-Town Student Subscription, K2 and 3.5 Teacher Materials, and K5 Manipulative Kits for $44,166 coming from the General Fund. We have the Alternate Curriculum, Secondary Annual Renewal of Unique Learning Systems, L3 Skills, Symbol Sticks Prime, Symbol Sticks and N2Y News-to-U Subscription for $37,171.72 from the General Fund, and we have the Head Start Report.
Madam President.
Mr. Siegler.
I move that the Board of Education approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
Support.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Moving on to the Superintendent Contract.
You want me to do a motion? Sure.
Mrs. Casa Grande.
I move that the Board of Education approve the Superintendent Contract of Employment with Dr. Michael Lons for a term commencing on July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2027 as presented, and we need a roll call vote, but we need a second.
Support.
Any discussion?
I actually have something. I just want to thank you, Mrs. Kaplan, for being very open, transparent, having a lot of communication with us as we were making sure that we, you know, met with Dr. Lons, we had a closed session, we talked about, you know, where we wanted to be, and we, you know, had a consensus that we wanted a three-year contract with Dr. Lons, and, you know, it's all, you know, part of the process. Sometimes it's a new learning process for some people who haven't done it. Hopefully, we don't have to bring in a new superintendent anytime soon. We hope that this is three years and then some. But you and I were on speed dial for a while, and I know you were talking to other board members as well, so I thought, I've been part of negotiations and contracts for a while here, and I thought that this went well. I appreciated that we had a lot of conversation around it, and I am thankful that we were able to come to an agreement to bring Dr. Lons on for three years.
Mrs. Casa Grande.
Yes.
Mrs. Fernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Lippett.
Yes.
Mr. Siegler.
Yes.
And Mrs. Kaplan.
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Would you like to speak? You can speak for a minute.
Well, thank you so much. I'm truly honored to be a member of this amazing team. Thank you for your support. It means the world to me. I know that our leadership team is going to work all summer long to make sure that we have a fantastic 2024, 2025 school year for our student, staff, and our school community. And finally, I'd like to thank my children, and most importantly, my wife, Jessica, for their support, because I couldn't do this job without them, so thank you again.
Jessica, say goodbye.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Lons. Moving on, we have District-Wide Playground Soft Surface Material Superior Ground Cover Incorporated for $53,250 from the General Fund. Mr. Lippett.
Yep. I move that, oh, sorry.
He needs to say something first.
Sorry, he doesn't have to, but go ahead. Go ahead.
I was just going to explain for the community what this is, the installation of playground safety surfacing at all of our elementary schools to ensure student safety.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Lippett, go for it.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Education approve the purchase of District-Wide Playground Soft Surface Material Superior Ground Cover Incorporated for $53,250 from the General Fund.
Report.
Any discussion? Nope. Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Moving on to District Curriculum Support K2 Jump Rope Readers Classroom Bundles Heinemann $133,984.10 from the General Fund. Mrs. Kowalski.
Thank you, President Kaplan. So, these K2 Jump Rope Readers actually are decodable texts that align with our phonics units that are explicit and systemic. We utilize those with our K2 learners and helping to support them in their literacy growth. And the 35J Grant Fund, yes, it goes through the General Fund. 35J is a new funding source from the state of Michigan that can be used to support professional learning and curriculum supports in the area of literacy. So, we've been fortunate enough to, as Mrs. Homer talked about before, we have a variety of grant funds. This is just one source. It's very specific on what we can use it for, and so therefore, listening to our teachers, getting feedback from them, that's what this purchase would do. It would put those decodable texts that are phonics-driven into the hands of our teachers and allow them to work with our students in small group and one-on-one.
Mrs. Kaplan.
Mrs. Casa Grande.
I move that the Board of Education approve the purchase of District Curriculum Supports K-2 Jump Rope Readers Classroom Bundles Heinemann for $133,984.10 from the 35J Grant Funds paid via the General Fund.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. 2019 Bond Program Furnishings Phase 5.3 Central High School, Smart Middle School, Outdoor Education Center, and Elementary Riser Guardrails in the Amount of $196,085.92 from the 2019 Bond Fund. Mr. Chatfield this time?
Yeah, this is just replacement, new and replacement bond furniture for several schools, including all of the replacement furniture for the outdoor center, two additional rooms at Central, one teaching station at Smart, and music risers at Gleneary Guest and Wild Lake Elementarys.
President.
Mr. Siegler.
I move the Board of Education approve the purchase of the 2019 Bond Program Furnishings Phase 5.3 Central High School, 19057A, Smart Middle School, 19063A Outdoor Education Center, 19078A, and Elementary Riser Guardrails, 19074A, 19067A, 19066A for $196,085.92 from the 2019 Bond Fund.
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Bid awards over $50,000. 2019 Project Northern High School Generator Pre-Purchase Cummins Sale and Service in the Amount of $203,275 from the 2019 Bond Fund.
Thank you, Mrs. Kaplan. This purchase is for the, a replacement generator in Northern High School, which was part of the scheduled bond work for Northern. We are recommending pre-purchasing this generator because of the long delivery lead times for generator construction and delivery these days. So, the installation of this generator will come with an electrical bid package that we will bring to the board for their consideration in probably sometime this fall, but we need to get the generator ordered at this time in order to have the best opportunity to have it installed and operational for the start of the '25, '26 school year.
Mrs. Kaplan.
Mrs. Fernandez.
I move that the Board of Education approve the bid award for the 2019 Bond Project Northern High School Generator Pre-Purchase from Cummins Sales and Services for $203,275 from the 2019 Bond Fund.
Support.
Any discussion? Mr. Siegler.
Mr. Chatfield, when we do this and we're replacing, do we scrap the old generator as a put-up-for-sale? What happens with it?
It becomes the responsibility of the electrical contractor who's charged with installing the new generator. That generator is original to the building, so it's going to be 23 years old by the time it comes out. There might be some salvageability to it, but that will be the contractor's responsibility.
Any other? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Custodial Services Contract Extension, Dr. Lons.
Mr. Chatfield.
Thank you, Dr. Lons. Since July of 2010, EnviroClean Building Services has provided cleaning, custodial, and minor maintenance services for the district. Their level of services remains satisfactory, and their performance in providing clean and sanitary schools has improved each of the past three years. Administration recommends renewing the contract with EnviroClean for a three-year period from July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2027, at an average cost of 3.75 annual increase in contract costs, including small additional healthcare premium costs for those employees of EnviroClean that choose that. A portion of this increase will be subject to meeting satisfactory performance objectives established by the district. We've had that provision in the contract for some time now. The contract does include an option to add two additional one-year extensions at the district's discretion.
Mrs. Kaplan.
Mrs. Casa Grande.
I move that the Board of Education approve a three-year custodial services contract with EnviroClean Building Services that includes an average 3.75% annual contract increase and reimbursement of healthcare premiums for those employees accepting coverage in accordance with the contract, subject to satisfactory performance objectives, and further authorize the superintendent of schools to execute the contract.
Support.
Any discussion?
Mrs. Kaplan.
Mrs. Casa Grande.
And this might go to Dr. Lons and maybe Dr. Bernia, but probably you going forward, however you see fit. I think that in the past, the board had a little more insight into the performance and how they were doing, et cetera. When we first brought them on board, we didn't have that, and then we put it in place. However you see fit, whether that's in a board bulletin or whether it is a presentation, you decide, but I would love to see that again, just so that we can have a little bit more insight into that.
Mr. Siegler.
Thank you, Mrs. Kaplan. I know when we first started, you know, as with any new project, we hit a few bumps in the road, but having been in the buildings this year, I have seen a dramatic improvement. I was a little, as I said, you know, a little concerned in the beginning, but now I think we are well on our way. It is, I know, when we look at it, it is an expense, but the way we're doing it with an outside service is a cross-savings to the district, and we're able to put those dollars back into the classrooms, and, you know, I want to thank the community also for understanding that we, you know, we learned as we went, but now I am very confident in what we're seeing in the building, so thank you.
Any other? Nope. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Moving on to the 2024, 2025 Millage Rates. Dr. Lons.
Mrs. Homer.
Yes, we already talked about it in the public hearing, but based on the provisions of Proposal A and the change in the Michigan Business Tax in 2011, '12, the millage rates required to generate the homestead and non-homestead millage rates for 2024, '25 will be 16.7461 mills on all non-homestead properties. Principal residents, qualified agricultural, qualified forest, and industrial personal will be .3086 mills and 5.0547 mills on commercial personal properties. To satisfy the debt obligations for '24, '25, 4.05 mills will be levied on all properties for debt, and 4.4981 mills on all properties for the sinking fund.
Mrs. Kaplan.
Mrs. Casa Grande.
I move that the Board of Education approve a General Fund Millage Rate of 16.7461 mills on all non-homestead properties. Principal residents, qualified agricultural, qualified forest, and industrial personal will be 0.3086 mills and 5.0547 mills on commercial personal properties. To satisfy the debt obligations for '24, '25, 4.0500 mills will be levied on all properties for debt and 0.4981 mills on all properties for the sinking fund.
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Waiver Request, Dr. Lons.
Back to Mr. Chatfield.
Thank you, Dr. Lons. The Commerce Chargers and Wild Lake Braves are nonprofit, community-based youth program and cheer programs that are direct feeders to Wild Lake Central and Wild Lake Western High Schools. These programs work closely with high school coaches to better prepare student athletes for the high school experience. Over 60% of district athletes who participate in a Wild Lake High School football or cheer program began by participating in a Chargers or Braves community program. With the elimination of middle school football and cheer, these programs are valuable outlets for our student athletes, and they are requesting a waiver of their fees.
Mrs. Kaplan.
Mr. Lippett.
I move that the Board of Education approve a 50% reduction in the athletic field rental fees for the '24, '25 school year for the Wild Lake Braves and Commerce Youth Football and Cheer Programs in accordance with Board Policy 7002-AR Fee Schedule School Facilities.
Support.
Any discussion? I would just like to say thanks for this. It's important that we have this for our future football players and cheerleaders and, you know, for other activities as such, so I appreciate that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Resolution, MHSAA Cooperative Team Application, Dr. Lons.
Thank you very much. Wild Lake Central, Western, and Northern High Schools' boys hockey teams' participation have been declining over the past several years, which is similar to what's happening throughout the state of Michigan. In 2023, administration reviewed the high school boys hockey program and suggested the best option for the team was to form one unified team. The board approved, at the May 4, 2023 meeting, Wild Lake Central and Northern would form an MHSAA cooperative team for the '23, '24 season. Wild Lake Western has completed its two-year agreement with Pinckney, and it is recommended that it be added into the '24, '25 cooperative agreement so that we have one unified Wild Lake team.
Mrs. Kaplan.
Mrs. Fernandez.
I move that the Board of Education approve the MHSAA Cooperative Team Application to combine Wild Lake Central, Wild Lake Northern, and Wild Lake Western High Schools' boys varsity and junior varsity ice Varsity and Junior Varsity Ice Hockey Programs, beginning the 2024-2025 Athletic Season.
Support.
Any discussion?
Mrs. Kaplan.
Mrs. Casa Grande.
I just, for transparency, I'd like to talk about this a little bit at the table, right? So, this isn't unusual. We've done this for several of the sports in order for our students to be able to still participate. I, we don't get into the minutia of who decides to have the team and where they go, et cetera. I will say that I know that my older two boys were part of a cooperative with water polo, right? And then now we continue to do that with not only the young men, but also our young women have a cooperative water polo. So, we see a lot of this, and we appreciate that this gives them an opportunity to still be there playing for Wild Lake. So, I support this.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Resolution, MHSAA Cooperative Team Application, Dr. Lance.
Thank you very much. Wild Lake Central and Wild Lake Northern High Schools JV and Varsity Boys Lacrosse Teams formed a unified team in 2021. Due to low participation, Wild Lake Western is requesting to join that cooperative team program. Administration recommends that the board approve the MHSAA Cooperative Team Application to form one unified Wild Lake team.
Mrs. Fernandez.
I move that the Board of Education approve the MHSAA Cooperative Team Application to combine Wild Lake Central, Northern, and Western High School Boys Varsity and Junior Varsity Lacrosse, beginning with the 2024-25 Athletic Season.
Support.
Any discussion?
Mrs. Kaplan.
Mr. Lippett.
I just want to say this, that for those of you who've never been to one of these lacrosse games, they are incredibly exuberant. Now, the, just the notion of a combined opportunity to play against other schools, I think is fantastic, and I think to the extent that we can extend that opportunity for these kids is fantastic. So, looking forward to that. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Resolution, MHSAA Membership, Dr. Lance.
Thank you. Madam President, the Board of Education hereby delegates the superintendent and/or his designated me the responsibility for supervising and controlling the district's secondary athletic activities and hereby accepts Constitution and bylaws of the Michigan High School Association, MHSAA. The district adopts its own rules, regulations, interpretations as minimum standards, as published in the current Athletic Handbook, and is the governing code under which Wild Lake Secondary Schools shall conduct its program of interscholastic athletics and agrees to primary enforcement of said rules, regulations, interpretations, qualifications. In addition, it hereby agreed that the schools that host or participate in the association's meets and tournaments shall follow and enforce all tournament's policies, procedures, and schedules. This authorization shall be in effect from August 1, 2024, and shall remain in effect until July 31, 2025, during which the authorization may not be revoked.
Mr. Siegler.
I move that the Board of Education adopt the Michigan High School Athletic Association membership resolution as presented.
Support.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you. At 9:30, we are adjourned.